Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Okay, I see that it's 6:31. I'm going to call the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board to order. Today is Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. This meeting is being conducted via Zoom. Adjustments to the agenda, Superintendent Pratt?
The only thing I had is under Communication and Public Comment, under 3B. I'd like to also add the wellness letter that was submitted to me and I could read.
Thank you, Chris. So we'll add the wellness letter as a 3B. Are there any others? Okay, I'm going to add one. And that will be update on unfair labor practice claim. That's obviously related to negotiations. We'll do that as an executive session item at the end of the agenda.
David, I have something.
Yes, and I see Priscilla has a hand. Go ahead, Jason, please.
I'd like to point of order.
Oh, was it Priscilla? I'm ready.
Jason had something.
Can you hear me, David?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a point of order about the wellness letter and the school nurse letter.
Okay, what's your point of order, Jason?
My point of order, that the first one that was drafted to us was one day prior to the governor's announcement. The date was November 12th. The governor made an announcement on November 13th with policies and procedures for all Vermonters. And then furthermore, we received a second draft of the nurse letter just a couple hours ago, which has basically the same wording, but does not have a date on it. So I'd like to have none of these available.
Well, Jason, I'm going to overrule you, and I'm going to explain why. These are communications. And as a board, we do not censor comment either from the public or from our staff. So although I certainly understand your reasoning here and respect it, I think it's important that issues of this type, which do have public interest and have potential consequences for the public, need to be expressed and not suppressed. So that's my ruling. And Priscilla, did you have an item?
Yeah, there's something on there about the preparation of the evaluation form and that. I know I haven't had enough time actually to go through it and look at it. And I think maybe we want a discussion, at least preliminary discussion, so that we're ready to put that out at least sometime in December, so that we can get it back.
Well, Priscilla, Chris Pratt and I did have this discussion. And I think that the two of us are in agreement that we really need to trot it out to local boards for input and then come back to the SU table and see if we can hammer out a document that we're all going to be satisfied with. So that's why it's not on for discussion tonight. If you would like to add it, and you feel it's important, I'm willing to put it on. But I think you've pretty much got the update right there. Do you wish to add it, Priscilla?
I want it added, especially for not having a meeting for a month or two.
Well, definitely won't be two months, Priscilla. And I'm...
Are we having one in December that's early enough in the month where we can address this and get it out there?
My response to you, Priscilla, is that we can have that discussion tonight, but until all the boards have had an opportunity to see it and react to it, I don't believe that the SU board is going to be in a position to approve the final draft.
I wasn't asking for a final draft. I was asking for a discussion so that maybe if people had comments or ideas, that they could be put out there so that maybe we, the boards, could be thinking about it and getting an individual board discussion so that it could get back to the WNSU in a prompt fashion.
I have your meaning, Priscilla. We will add that as an executive item called Superintendent Evaluation. And we will take care of that in executive session, as well as I'm anticipating a real estate if Molly has something ready for us, and also the update on the unfair labor practice. Anything else? Well, all right then. Chris?
That's it.
Who will speak on behalf of the nurses? And before we get going here, we will be coming back to the question of the nurse letter. Chris, where is it on the agenda? I thought we had this on for discussion.
It's under Superintendent's Recommendation Anticipated Action. That would be 6A2.
6A2, okay. Superintendent's recommended, okay. Thank you, Chris. Got it. All right, who's speaking on behalf of the nurses?
Mr. Rebecca Stockwell, one of the nurses, will be speaking on behalf of the letter. And thank you for everyone who was here tonight.
Rebecca, you are recognized.
Thank you, David. And thank you for allowing us to read this. I have to say that I'm a little concerned that there was someone that didn't want us to read it. That's a little worrying to me. So I'm going to read the letter. There was a first draft of it, and I apologize, I'm not sure that we were aware as a nursing group that it was going to go out to the board. So it really was a rough draft. And so this is the final draft. That's why you have received two versions of it. So, you know, it was not meant to cause any confusion. All right. Amid the increase in COVID-19 cases in Vermont and the recent upswing of cases of COVID in Wyndham County, coupled with the upcoming holiday season, we, the nurses employed by this district, feel it would be prudent for the schools to provide remote learning for the week for a minimum of seven days following the holiday breaks. The current guidelines allow discontinuation of quarantine with a negative test average for seven days. So that's where that came from. We have been an integral part of our school's COVID task force, guiding our schools from a safety and health standpoint. We are continuously working closely with the Vermont Health Department and our schools in a strong collaborative effort to keep everyone safe and healthy. We are in agreement that a week of remote learning is not only proactive, but a safe approach during this pandemic to student reentry into our buildings. We understand the value and importance of in-person education for our students, and we want all of our students in the building. But as the people charged with keeping our staff and students safe, this is our recommendation. Again, we remind you that we are in the midst of a pandemic, and the health and safety of our students truthfully has to trump academics. Overall, we have done... I'm going to keep going. It looks like someone...
You're encouraged to keep going, Rebecca. You have the floor.
Overall, we have done well, but it's because we have been diligent about keeping students with COVID-like symptoms out of the building, or have sent students home who present with possible symptoms. We are the school's first line of defense for health and safety, and we take our jobs extremely seriously. However cautious this recommendation might sound, it is our responsibility to our schools to advocate for what we see as the best from a health standpoint. At this point, we know that schools are not the super spreaders of COVID, but the gatherings that occur over the holidays will put the schools at risk, as evidenced by Halloween and the uptick of cases we've seen since then. The risk could come from traveling out of state, having guests, or from hosting large gatherings beyond the immediate family. Our point is that although traveling is risky, it's not the only thing that puts our schools at risk. And we do believe, the governor did say no gatherings outside of your immediate family, but we believe that there will be gatherings outside of the immediate family. The advantages of this proactive strategy are, when families return from traveling or interacting with others over Thanksgiving and winter break, there will be a percentage of students and staff who will need to quarantine due to travel outside of Vermont. At this point, there can't even be leisure travel to Walpole without quarantine. Remote learning will allow them to continue their education more fully while in quarantine. The time away from in-person learning following the break could be a good time to monitor post-student health trends while eliminating exposure in school. Even if Vermont doesn't show an increase of COVID cases, there will certainly be other illnesses, such as cold and flu, which because they share many symptoms with COVID, will cause students to be out of school until an alternate diagnosis, or a negative test, or a 10-day quarantine from start of symptoms occur. We understand this may be disruptive, but feel the possibility of additional COVID cases in the schools would cause more disruption and stress to families and staff. In the long run, this recommendation could prevent cases of COVID within the school, help us maintain the health and safety within our school community, as well as decrease staff and student absences. We really appreciate your time in allowing us to read this letter. I think one of the other, you know, we just have to consider the, also how people are going to feel about coming back to schools, and if they are going to be nervous about coming back to school. You know, we have to keep everyone sane in the midst of this. So that is what I have for the letter.
Thank you, Rebecca. Chris, you have a letter from your Wellness Committee. And tell us again who your Wellness Committee is, please, Chris.
Sure. So on this Wellness Committee of Jane Mitchell, who's the coordinator, you have Dr. Carey, Oriana Baez, Heather Waris, Jean Hodston, and a Greater Falls connection is also part of the Wellness Committee. So this is a letter that was sent to me in regards to supporting the nurses' letter, and so I'm going to read it for the Board of Directors. As a result of the significant COVID-19 spike throughout the state of Vermont, the Wellness Committee would like to add its support to the WNESU nurses' recommendation for remote learning after the holiday breaks. Given that this was discussed with most of the, all the task force and widely supported, they are all in, most of them, if not all, are in agreement that the remote learning after the holidays is not the only proactive strategy, but also a good approach for providing education during this pandemic. We believe that the nurses' recommended plan will help us stay safe and guarantee a safe reentry after the holiday season for our students and staff. Most sincerely, the Wyndham Supervisor Union Wellness Committee.
Okay, thank you, Chris. We're down to the minutes of October 28th.
David, David, I have a comment from a parent that I'd like to read to you at this time under commentary.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
I'm going to take out anything that refers to this person as, that would not let them remain anonymous, because I think that's important under the situation. I'm writing to you today to let you know that there are a few teachers at our school who do not agree with the letter and proposal for Mr. Pratt and the nurses about going remote for one week post Thanksgiving and one week post winter vacation. We Vermonters have been asked to remain within our border and not congregate in large groups or even mixed households. Because this is the expectation, I do not think we should give families the opportunity to travel, knowing we have a one-week bumper so they can travel, does the opposite and doesn't hold them accountable, and should expect that they will be in school on the Monday after Thanksgiving. My biggest issue with going remote off and on is that I cannot, without completely relying on family and guardians, expect my students to complete work independently. They need to be in person to have my prompting and support. It looks different for K-2 and 3-4, or even middle school and high school. I think that people forget that and just lump us all together. My kids use lots and lots of materials, need the consistency of a daily routine to help them with their learning, and also need what limited socialization they get from being in school, socially distanced and masked up. The transition of in-person to remote, back to in-person, back to remote, is very challenging for young learners who thrive on consistency. I have anxiety just thinking about transitions and additional work needed to make those random remote weeks productive. We also will have no planning prep time during our contracted hours to get ready for a week of remote learning. And this person has asked that we not share the name at the board meeting. So, but that's basically their thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Point of order, David, before you move forward to the minutes?
Yes, Deb.
So you're not going to allow any discussion by the board of these two letters? Is that your intention?
Communication and public comment, Deb, is when we receive communication from the public, and it is not a time for discussion. We can certainly get back into this when we get down to six, Item A2, which is Superintendent's Recommendation, because he will, I believe, express an administrative recommendation as to how we approach this. Furthermore, we can also bring it up individually under Director's Comment. But Communication and Public Comment is not intended to be interactive. It's our opportunity to receive input from our constituents, be they parents, students, teachers, taxpayers, or other members of the public.
Well, thank you, David. I believe that via the two letters we just heard, that was, that is the superintendent's intention, and I would prefer that we had to have put that down at six, but I will wait until we get to six. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have three hands up. And I'm going to ask a question before I recognize any of those hands. And that is, is there any other Communication and Public Comment to come before this board? Okay? Now, Jason Terry, I would like to recognize you, and I'll work my way back to Lynn and Chris.
Thank you, David. I just want to reiterate that I also received that same email that Priscilla did from a teacher. I don't know where they work. And that is an email, and it was from a teacher. I just want to make sure that Priscilla made that clear.
I think that was clear, Jason. Is that, was that your understanding, Priscilla?
Yeah, David, let me read the last couple lines, too, because I left those off. If you speak to other board members, let them know there are teachers in this district who are not traveling and do not want to do remote learning as a precaution for those who break the rules. We have protocols set up in the schools to keep staff and students safe. Let's trust the hard work we've done so far and stay in school.
Thank you, Priscilla.
I was worried about anonymity, and so I didn't go down beyond the space where it asked me not to share the name. So sorry.
Thank you.
That was the end.
I want to ask one more time if there's additional Communication and Public Comment. I did have a hand up from you, Lynn. Is it Communication and Public Comment?
Yes, I have a parent that would like to speak. Dia Rigler, Rigler, Rigler.
Thank you. It's Dia Rigler. I just want to say, I'm a fellow educator myself. I'm on a leave from Boston Public Schools because it is wildly unsafe to be teaching in schools. And I just wanted to say that I am in favor for taking those weeks off as a way to keep our greater community safe.
Thank you, Dia. Lynn, are there any other communications you're aware of?
Bill Scarlett, counselor from the Central School, would like to speak.
Will Scarlett, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all of, everybody in this meeting right now. You're all heroes. This is not easy. We're all struggling. The kids are struggling. But thank you for being here and for caring. I don't want to say a lot. I'll be quick. But I had, I was reading the article about Twin Rivers, which is just north and west of us, you know, going full remote until January. And I thought that one of the things that Lauren Fierman said, she was the, she's the superintendent there, just kind of resonated with me. So I wanted to share it with everybody in case you hadn't heard it. And Lauren said, "In-person instruction is what is best." I don't think any of us argue otherwise. But then she said, "But we have to deal with the reality of the situation and not what we want the situation to be." And I just, that just seems like wisdom to me. And my final words to the board, I just want to say to you that I trust and I have faith in you that you will guide us, help us guide through this storm. And thank you for allowing me to comment publicly.
Thank you, Will. Chris or Lynn, are there any other members of the public who haven't had the opportunity to comment?
Yes, Jen Burke.
Jen?
Hi.
Recognized.
Thank you. I'm Jen. I'm at the Central School. I'm one of the nurses there. I just wanted to add, I agree that we have some screening protocols in place. We are screening at the front door and obviously when they get off the bus. But I just want to speak a little bit to that as far as they're fairly unreliable as far as we know that the non-contact thermometers at this point in the year now, even we're taking their temps inside the school door, inside the foyer, they give us very low readings. And although we do ask a question about travel to all of the families, a few will tell us if they have traveled, but majority, partly maybe because they don't understand the guidelines that have tightened up and prior to this last week, but many don't necessarily say that they have traveled. And so just as a little, just a quick little data reference, just so you guys as the board know, like what the nurses are looking at as far as number of kids that are out. We knew that the increase, we knew there would be an increase after Halloween. That was just pretty much kind of an expected thing, especially with kids trick-or-treating in groups and kind of going all over the communities. So from last week, from November 9th to the 13th, we have a total of 49 kids out for the full week of school. So breaking that down a little bit, just, you know, I don't want to give specific numbers of each school, just because some of our schools are pretty small. But for the elementary schools alone, that was 28 kids that were out for the full week, eight due to travel, 20 due to COVID-like illnesses. The rest were then the middle school and the high school age kids. Those guys still have some remote learning, obviously, with their hybrid situation. So 28 kids, basically, last week, we didn't even tune in on Wednesday because of the holiday. They were out the full week. This week, so far, we have 53 students out. 20 are, eight are out due to travel. Now, very few of those families told us they traveled. That is the nurses policing parents, calling them in the morning after a student says, "I went to Massachusetts. I went to New Hampshire. I went all over." These, that's our concern about the holiday coming, is that families are going to do what, you know, I would expect families do. Yes, most of us, hopefully, like staff, are going to try to do the right thing. But things, people are going to still celebrate and have people to their houses, have kids coming home from college, all of that. And without the true depiction of what is happening on these surveys, this is what's happening, like for data. So this week, we have 33 kids out for COVID-like illnesses, waiting for tests or just cold-like symptoms, but have to be out the 10 days, and 20 kids due to traveling. So I expect, just in general, whether we're there after the Monday after Thanksgiving, or if we do do a remote week, that number is going to spike, not because they're honest necessarily on these surveys, but because this is what's going to happen when we return. So I just want everybody to think about, 53 kids right now are out already before the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Chris or Lynn, do we have anyone else?
We do. We have Jody Hauser, and then Christine Bielsi, and then Angela Carde.
Hi there. I'm just going to keep my video off because I don't have the greatest internet. But I just wanted to say, first of all, my schedule at Central has actually been great since we brought the kids back. So I really, I'm loving having my schedule as close to what it was on a normal year. But I wanted to point out, which hasn't been mentioned yet, that per the governor's directive, there is a number of people in this district, staff members, who have children coming home from college. And that is going to force them to quarantine because unless they put their child in a room and don't interact with them, those staff members are going to have to quarantine as well. And my concern logistically is we don't have coverage. So we have one, I know at Central, one to two subs that come in. So if we have four staff members out, we don't have the staffing, or we're going to have staff members, like myself, who's the librarian, may have to cover. And then I'm cross-contaminating because I'm going into multiple rooms. And I just think that's a really important thing to remember, that logistically, we don't have the staff to cover people who are actually doing what the governor is asking them to do per his directives. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Who's next again? Chris?
Christine Bielsi.
Christine, would you spell your last name for me? I'm trying to keep up.
Yeah, it's B-I-O-L-S-I.
Thank you, Christine. Well, you are recognized.
Thank you. I am both a parent at Westminster of a kindergartner, and I'm also the sixth-grade teacher at Westminster. So I'm speaking in both capacities right now. So I think that the recommendation of the nurses we should follow. I think that many people are not following travel guidance and will continue not to once during the Thanksgiving holiday. It is infinitely harder to teach remotely, so it's not that the teachers are asking for anything that's easier for them. It's harder for us to do this. I also have some concerns. I've noticed since I've started watching the board meetings this summer, that some of the board members kind of speak pretty cavalierly, or I'm not saying that word correctly, but about teachers and students going back into schools. And I would just like a public statement from the board members if they actually consider COVID to be a serious health risk, because it seems like the way they talk about it, they don't think that it is. And I think that really heavily impacts their decision-making.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Your request has been noted, and it may very well appear as an agenda item on our future agenda likely next month. Chris, who do we have next?
Next up, we have Angela Cardier.
And Angela, spell your last name for me, would you?
Yes, it's C-A-R-T-I-E-R.
Okay. And would you pronounce it for me, please?
Cardier.
Oh, Cardier. Okay, fine. Gotcha. All right, Angela, you're recognized.
Hi, everyone. So I'm a teacher at Grafton Elementary School. I teach third and fourth grade. I did have something prepared, but I decided since everything that I've already sort of prepared has been discussed, but something that hasn't been discussed is teacher planning. One thing that I think about, I've had students out, and all of us at Grafton have had students out of our rooms. And so we're planning for in-person instruction. We're planning for a day of remote on Wednesday. And then suddenly, one of our students ends up needing to quarantine, either they're sick or because they traveled. Then we have to still give them an education, which we all completely agree with. And I think all teachers, all human beings can agree that these children, despite the pandemic, need an education and as best education as we can provide. And so it's forcing us, forget about the extra time that it's taking us to then do this, but then we have to get those kids on a video call, however many times throughout the day that we're going to teach a mini lesson. And then somehow, they have to try and access those things without all of their materials, which is very unfair to them. And we're asking these children, whether they're five or whether they're 17, to access something with limited materials. We sent home backpacks, of course, but it's been a few months now. I mean, things go missing, and they don't have their regular supplies. If we knew we're going to go remote the week after Thanksgiving, we could send all of this stuff home. We could set them up for success, and they could all have it. But if it's just suddenly overnight that it's one or it's two kids that are just going to be out, they're not getting what everyone else is getting. And then the kids who are in school are impacted by the fact that I'm in front of my computer screen now, rather than walking around the room and trying to help them, or trying to present something on the smartboard, or using my Elmo. It's a very tricky thing. And we just spent the entire day, all, everybody in this entire SU, I think, all of the teachers and staff, with the Corwin Going Deeper With Distance Learning Institute. We should use those things. We should now plan over the next couple of days that after Thanksgiving, this is what we're going to be doing, and do it, and do it well, and talk with our colleagues, and get it done, and do it. But if we just keep doing what we're doing, it's, the education is not spectacular. We can make it as spectacular as we possibly can by using what we have learned and what we know, and make it so that everybody's getting the same thing remotely. And then we're all safe, too. I don't think that it's enabling families to travel. What it's doing is allowing us to not be the COVID-19 police, because that's not good for parent-teacher, parent-to-school relationship. because that's not good for parent-teacher, parent-to-school relationship either. Um, and that's important for us. In order for kids to get a proper education, it's a parent and a teacher and, you know, it's a parent-school relationship that's got to be a good one. And by policing parents, it's not, it's, it's not fostering that whole idea. Um, so those are just a few things that I wanted to throw on the table for us to think about when we talk about kids are entitled to good education. Thanks.
Thank you, Angela. Chris, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we have Jean Hodgson and then, um, let's see, Helen Richards-Peel.
Okay, uh, Jean, I can spell your name. You are recognized.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I just wanted to, um, add that, um, we all know COVID is closing in on us. We've been, um, you know, kind of, um, I, I'm not going to say, um, you know, uh, having our head under the covers or anything, but now it, it is closing in on us. And, um, one way that we know it is, is that the contact tracers out there are having so much work that they are now at, going to be asking the schools to be doing the contact tracing for cases in school. So, um, that's an, an added thing that just, um, you know, speaks to how busy, uh, the Vermont Department of Health is these days doing contact tracing that they can't keep up and they need the help of schools. So, um, you know, it's here and, um, like Jen said, schools are not the super-spreaders, but, you know, it will be coming into the schools at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Uh, Helen Richards-Peel, please.
Thank you, David. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to recognize and to commend this group of nurses that have worked. Since this all began together as an amazing team of educators, helping us all to do this work. They are invaluable with me as an administrator when it comes to making these hard decisions about whether to send a kid home because they traveled to Walpole to go whatever, do whatever, and all those things that, that the requirements that we have, all have to follow. They have done an amazing job and I would hope that the board would recognize them for the amazing work that they have done to help all of us. And in addition, uh, Angela said it, uh, really nicely, but today, all the elementary, uh, teachers in the district, thanks to Dr. Carey for finding the funds for us all, participated in a distance learning, going deeper, uh, professional development. And we learned a lot from a lot of teachers around the country who were also having to do this work. So I just wanted to assure the board that we're getting ready, we're, we're prepared for the work that needs to go on. And no, it's not the same as in-school learning, but it's the best that we can do right now and our teachers are heroes and doing the great work that they need to do to get us all ready to do this. So thank you, David.
Thank you, Helen. Uh, Chris, do we have, uh, other speakers?
Uh, that's all I see for right now, dude.
Okay. In that case, um, I would like to move down to item four on our agenda, which is to approve the minutes of October twenty-eighth. Um, I would like to have a motion on those minutes, please.
Make a motion, would we accept them?
Thank you, Lynn. Um, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Jessa. All right, I presume that everyone has had an opportunity to at least have a look at them. Are there any corrections to those minutes? All right, then I would like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes as approved. And I'm going to, I'm going to roll call the board. It's a lot easier for me. Um, Molly Bannick? You can give, somebody give me a thumbs up if you're not.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Deb Wright?
Yes.
Uh, George Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Jason Terry?
Yes.
Priscilla Lambert?
Yes.
Uh, Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Uh, Jessa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The minutes are approved. Um, Policy Committee update. Um, Chris, appointment of a Rockham board member. Where are we on that?
David, I can speak to that. So, um,
Great.
The, uh, George.
Oh, I'm sorry, George.
Um, Jason Benson is the, um, um, policy, uh, member from Rock, Rockham Board and, uh, Priscilla is the alternate. That was, um, our restructuring meeting back in March. Those were, uh, the appointments.
Okay, so it will be, uh, Jason, uh, Benson with, uh, Priscilla acting as an alternate. Okay, I think we've got that, uh, settled then. Uh, Chris, anticipated next meeting of, uh, policy, by the way, do you have one?
No, not yet.
Okay. Keep us updated on that, please. All right, um, reports, Superintendent, um, I guess you can start off with school updates, Chris, please.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to jump right into it. Um, so starting off, um, so starting on Friday, we have been assigned for the staff COVID testing. Um, that'll take place on Friday. Um, employees that have asked to register for the test by tomorrow. And so far, um, the two sites that we're, we're using, the collection sites, I believe, are Saxons River and Bellas Falls Union High Schools. Um, teachers have been provided the information on how to register as well as to how to conduct the, the swab test. So as of ten, as of today, um, this afternoon, we have a total of seventy-five, um, teachers um, and, um, employees who have, um, volunteered to have the, the test done. And so, um, from the middle school, there's fourteen, from the high school, there's twenty, from Central School, there's eleven, Athens Grafton has six, Saxons River nine, Westminster ten, and the SU office has five. Um, so that's Friday that these, um, tests will be conducted. Want to give everyone update on, um, where we are right now in regards to student learning. Um, not a whole lot has changed. Um, you'll have more specifics at each of your board meeting, but I'll start off with the Athens Grafton. Um, currently, all students are attending learning for four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Wednesdays stay, and Wednesdays do stay remote. Um, there are forty-one students attending the, um, school learning and eight through V two V L C. And two of the V two V L C students are planning on returning to school in January. Um, moving on to Saxons River, all K through four students are back for four days in-person learning and that began on eleven-two. Also, that begun on eleven-nine, third grade, third grade classrooms will move to the art room to increase social distancing. Um, let's see, there are systems in place for each classroom for when students have to quarantine. So, um, keep in mind Saxons River, you know, all the students, um, K four are back as of eleven-nine. Moving on to Central. Brought back students in grades three and four on November ninth. Um, this is the final cohort of students moving from phase two to three. Four days in person will continue to have deep cleaning on Wednesdays. We'll have a substitute in grades three as we are searching for a teacher, oh, um, to open two classes for each grade in grades three and four. Grade K two has been back in person for a couple of weeks now and it's going well. Westminster School, all students K six are now attending in-school learning four days a week, which is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And like the other schools, Wednesday is staying as, um, Remote Learning Day. They have nineteen students attending V T V L C. And they maintain the pod structure for K one, two, three, four, and five, six. Uh, the middle school. Um, subcommittee was formed to, let me just click on. Just give me one second here. I'm just calling up my notes for the middle school. So for the middle school, um, a subcommittee is being formed to explore, um, alternative sites for the seventh and eighth grades. Um, and, uh, I'm just going to give you a quick overview of the, the timeline. And like I said, all of these, um, reports that I'm giving will go into much greater detail, um, from the school principals at the, um, local district meetings. So the timeline is finalize subcommittee members by November fourth. First meeting will be on November eighteenth. Um, and that will be to develop the needs assessment and inventory, list possible sites, delegate parent of, pairing of two to three, to contact possible sites to evaluate if they meet the necessary criteria. Schedule site visits, discuss the site visits and decide which sites can meet our needs and share results with Superintendent and discuss next steps. Um, currently, um, let's see. Back a little bit. So middle schools, um, that's where we are with the middle school. Um, nothing else has changed since the last time. And so, um, what we want to do is make sure that, um, you know, the principals will give more informations to, to each board. Um, high school, um, same thing, um, has changed since the last time we reported out. And now I want to get into, um, it was suggested, requested by the board that, the travel survey that was conducted, I believe it was, um, a week and a half, two weeks ago. Um, the board members, keep in mind that this survey was sent out prior to the governor's announcements and during an administrative team meeting that we had, um, every Monday is that, um, a lot of the principals expressed that, you know, the numbers that, you know, I'm reporting out tonight are probably, um, the percentage is probably going to be higher since the governor's, um, announcement on Friday. So as for Athens Grafton, right now, they had, um, the question was asked, "Are you planning to travel outside of your home state during Thanksgiving break?" Eighty-two point one percent said they were not. Saxons River, the same question, ninety-two point one percent said they were not traveling outside of their home during Thanksgiving. Central School was sixty-two percent said they were not traveling. And like I said, keep in mind, this was done, um, at least a week before the governor's statement on Friday. So that was sixty-two point three percent, um, for Central School. Westminster, um, the response to the question was eighty-five percent are not traveling. Uh, the middle school, eighty-two point one percent not traveling. Um, let's see, the high school, eighty-six percent not traveling. And then for pre-K, sixty-seven percent not traveling. Um, so I'll open it up to any questions that anyone might have on the information I just shared.
Hands, please. George?
Uh, hey, Chris, thanks. Um, is that percentage of, uh, all students or just the percentage of, uh, or families or percentage of families who responded?
Percentage of families who responded.
Anything else, George?
All set. All set. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Lynn?
Chris, was there any question there about visitors coming in to the families from out of state?
Yes, each principal has the information on visitors that, um, that we asked that question as well. You know, I didn't provide it in tonight, so it was just a quick overview of the overall percentages, but each principal does have that, um, answer to that question for their, each individual board.
Other questions? Hey, Chris, I have one. Um, w- we know that of the families that responded, these are the, uh, percentages of, uh, families that indicated that they would stay home. What is the percentage of families that responded to the survey, Chris?
Uh, one second and I'll, I'll call that up. So for the high school. High school had two-hundred-and-three responses.
Well, and what does that work out to as a percentage, Chris?
Uh, I don't know if I'm.
Can I speak to that for a second?
Yes, Chris.
So, um, that's two-hundred-and-three responses. Remember that we also asked, um, staff to respond, so that, from what I could tell, it's basically about half of the student body, or of the families of our students responded. Um, I would throw out for the board's consideration that, um, and I have nothing factual to base this on, but it would make sense that if you were, those who were inclined to travel might be those who were not inclined to respond to the survey. I would just throw that out there for the board's consideration. But about half of our, uh, families responded.
Other schools, Chris Pratt?
Yep, so you had, um, I believe it was Central School had fifty-three responses.
Out of a total population of?
I don't have that.
A- about one thirty-nine, one forty?
Okay.
And then Saxons River had thirty-eight responses.
Out of seventy-five students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, don't have the numbers for the middle school in front of me. I have to go through a lot of emails, but like, um, so I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the actual respondents were from the high school. I mean, from the middle school.
Do you have Westminster School?
Um, yeah, I'd have to call it up.
I have your hand, Priscilla. I'll recognize you in a moment.
It's going to take me a little while to find it, so.
Okay. Athens Grafton, Chris, do you have it or can you find it?
Helen, do you, do you recall?
Just, I just looked it up, Chris. It's, uh, fifteen respondents out of forty-one students, but some of those are multi-children, you know, many children in a family, so. And I'm not sure exactly how many families that is, but fifteen respondents.
Um, Priscilla, I would like to take your question while Chris is, um, looking at Westminster.
I can give the middle schools.
Oh, great. That would be, be wonderful, Karen. Thank you.
We had a hundred-and-sixty-two responses. And again, as Chris Hodgson said, we sur- that was a survey of staff and families and that probably, um, is about three-fourths of our total.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Um, Priscilla, would you, uh, like to be recognized now?
Y- yes. Um, I was going to say that I, you know, it could be, you know, a family had several children too, so it didn't necessarily, they may have only responded once. But I disagree with, um, you, Mr. Hodgson, because I, if as a parent, I would say, "I'm not traveling anyway, so, you know, I'm not going to bother to send this in." That would be more my gist of it. I would think they would be less apt to answer if they weren't going to, because that way they felt it wasn't really impacting us.
You and I will agree to disagree on that, Priscilla.
That's fine. We, we have done that before.
Okay, uh.
David, I'm, 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 that's, I can't find Westminster's at this point.
Okay, well, we, we can, uh, let that alone for the time being. We're, we seem to be having some fairly consistent trend lines here, so I think we can do our own extrapolations. Um, Chris, anything else under updates before we move on to, uh, your recommendation?
I know I have nothing further.
Okay, and, um, Chris, we, we would like to hear your recommendation and, um, what sort of action that you would like to have from the board on that recommendation. Once we've gotten the recommendation out and your, um, uh, proposed response from the board, then I'm going to open it up for discussion.
Okay, so in support of the, the nurses' recommendation. Okay, so in support of the nurses' recommendation that I would recommend to the board. That the school board approve going into remote learning following the Thanksgiving break for the dates of eleven-thirty to twelve-four. And return on twelve-seven and following the winter recess from one-four to one-eight, returning on one-eleven.
Chris, let me raise a procedural question with you. And that is, can the SU board bind the member districts on this matter? And I, I have to say that I do support your recommendation. However, I say that with a strong sense that we, what we're discussing here. Is going to be a policy matter and that policy decisions ultimately rest with the local boards. So can you square us away on that? Does the SU board have the authority to bind the member districts?
Because, you know, it's, it's my interpretation and that that's what the SU board is set up to do is to have each member vote. They were voted to represent each board to vote on matters regarding the. Matters that would affect the entire S that need to be made and can't be made by individual board members, but as an SU. That's my understanding. You know, I'd like to hear from, you know, other board members, but that was my, that was my understanding of an SU board is that they do have. Voting rights because you voted members, each board has voted representation onto this SU board to make these types of decisions.
Okay, before I entertain a motion, I think I would like to open it up for discussion so that we can. Get a sense of how members of the constituent boards are reacting to this. Can I have a hand, please? Someone who would like to comment here?
Jack Brier has a.
Okay, well, I can see Molly's hand. Jack, I think is on page two, so I'm going to recognize Molly and then Jack. Please go ahead, Molly.
David, I'm not sure why we don't, why we can't have a motion and then discuss it, but. So is your question whether you think the SU board members should, should make a motion on this because it included all the schools?
Well, Molly, I'm gonna have to modify what I just said. Obviously, we are under discussion of an action item here. So a board member at any time can put a motion on the floor. And if that motion is seconded, then that's what we will be discussing. I was hoping that we could get a general sense of where board members feel and then introduce the motion, but I'm happy to go either way here on this. I would, I would recommend that if a motion is made that is an affirmative motion, which can be voted up. Just as readily as it can be voted down, because that's what the superintendent has asked for.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations. And hopefully one of my constituents will second it and then we can have a very lively discussion.
Well, all right then. Can I have a second, please? I have a second from Lynn. All right. We are open for discussion. Molly, would you like to speak to your motion?
Right now, I just want to say that I support it. I think that. There's a lot going on in the world and that we in little state of Vermont have been protected from a lot of it. But we need to do the right thing. And the right thing is to. Make sure that we're keeping everybody as safe as we can. I'm not going to tell you that I don't, that I do understand that this is. Going to be hard on, on parents with little kids that are trying to make a living and I hope that. You know, everybody can work together and try to help them. But I do, I do know that, you know, this is getting close to home and we need to be careful. And I, I agree with Chris Hodgson. I believe that. You know, there's people that are just are not going to give up the holiday. It's a hard, hard thing to not give it up. And, you know, I come from a big farm family. If you don't think it isn't hard, then I'm not going to go see my parents on Thanksgiving. It's hard to accept. I'm not going to, but there's a lot of people that are, so we just need to be careful. And I, I support our nurses. If our nurses say this is the thing to do, we have put them there. They are professionals. It's their, it's, it's their business. This is what they do. They are out there to protect us. So I support it a hundred percent.
Thank you, Molly. Jack Brier.
Thank you.
I'll get you next step.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, the, the, the SU board. Has as its responsibilities curriculum. And I looked, and I was looking this up during the conversation. And a curriculum, at least in terms of the way the state intends it, includes things such as dates. Of attendance and styles of attendance. We get into this last, wait last summer when we had the rather lively controversy about a hybrid. Instruction. And again, we said that this is an SU-wide issue. It is a curriculum-based issue. And therefore, the decision that this body makes, which I'm not a member, is binding. And I would use, I think that we've established that when we had the discussion about the hybrid model. And I think this continues in that vein. The second point that I want to make is that in those discussions, and I took notes from them. We had agreed that one of the things we would do is we would be guided by our medical professionals. During the course of the year. I thought that we, that was a binding agreement, but I can't find the vote on it, so I'm not entirely sure. But here's the thing, we, we've already acted on that. The unified school district was notified by our medical folks that we. Needed to close the school for a week last month because we had a COVID issue and we did. I didn't bring, I didn't convene our board to approve the decision or not. I just assumed it was binding and. Told my board members that it was binding and we were closed for a week. I believe that if our medical folks say the school should be closed, we should close it. And there really isn't a role except a thank you for giving us your recommendation from this board or any other board. We're not, the rest of our team, the rest of our board members are not medical professionals. If we intervene and say, oh, we've decided that we know better than those medical professionals, what we've effectively done is say. Hi, if some of your family members come down with COVID as a consequence of our having the schools open when they, when the medical professionals said not to. We've basically said, please sue us. I don't think that's a good idea. I think that the original understanding that we would be guided by our medical professionals. Ought to be considered as binding. I certainly, if there's a question about that, when the. When the policy committee meets, we'll make certain, but make this a priority. For discussion at this board, but it's my understanding that we had a sense of this board that we were already going to do that. And I'm kind of hoping that that's exactly what we'll do when looking at this. We have a recommendation from. Our medical folks, our administration is in support of that because they made it and that's how it works. And I'm hoping that the board will agree and that this should be a fairly pro forma thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Deb Wright?
Well, to speak to Jack, this is, to speak to Jack's response, this is not a fait accompli. And it isn't appropriate. And we were not, if we were just to be guided by, by the administration. And the nurses and so on and so forth, everyone in administration, we would not be elected into these seats. We are here to be concerned as well. With our constituents, not just what's going on inside the schools. It is not inevitable in our district. That we will be affected. Have you looked at the numbers for Westminster, Rockingham, Grafton and Athens? There's zero since October twenty-first. According to the data I saw just two days ago. And if you show me your finger one more time, Jack, one person does not close a school. Closing should not hinge on risky behavior by teachers and staff or any employees throughout the holidays. They should follow the directives of the governor of the state of Vermont, who is doing everything he can to keep our schools open. Our community and our school district is extremely safe. We are doing our jobs. We are doing our jobs so our students can continue schooling. We are seriously putting our students in danger of overall failure and mental incapacity because of the behaviors that we are enacting. Teachers must abide by Governor Scott's directive as the rest of us must. If we must do it, so must they. And every employee in the school district must abide by those. So. To have a survey about who's going away and who's not should be totally moot. Because they have to follow the directives. As employees, they must follow those directives. They have contracts that abide, they must abide by that require that they. Do everything they can to keep themselves out of legal danger and health. There are a lot of reasons why this should never have been a subject and the schools should remain open. Team twenty minutes away from here is still continuing their hybrid. They have a hundred percent open, but they're not closing schools and they have thirty-three cases in their. Community right now. And yet we're one of the safest communities in the entire state of Vermont, probably the safest. And we are closing our schools because we are going down like everybody else and just doing what everyone else is telling us to do. Just because a few districts are doing this does not justify, nor is it prudent for us to do this. I realize. Because of the two letters that were read up ahead and inundating. The board with teachers and nurses and public comment, which is not the purpose of public comment. Undermines the board's ability to think clearly and speak for our community, the entire community, not just one member, not just the administration, but everyone. We are running COVID scared. This is not the way to do this. Our children need to be in school and their parents will be in poverty. Which I don't believe any of you board members are willing to pay for to keep them out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I'm going to recognize Jason Terry and then Jessica West Clark, and I presume I'm going to have more hands. Go ahead, please, Jason.
Thank you, David. First, I'd just like to say that, you know, one of the board members was saying. To do what the nurses recommend and stuff, and I don't disagree with that, but that same board member constantly says, follow what the governor says, follow what Dr. Levine says. So those folks are saying something different than the nurses, so. I really like what Ms. Burke said and her comments. Her comments were about numbers and factual and saying. We don't, basically, we don't trust that people are going to do what the governor said. Do I like that? No. Am I, as a father, going to expect that my children do what the rules are? Yes. You know, it's kind of like speeding. You know, if you're gonna get caught speeding, you can't say, well, that person in front of me was speeding, give that person a ticket also. So I have an issue with how this letter was written. And that's my issue. And my. I don't really care, honestly, if we go remote for, you know, the week after. It doesn't faze me one bit. You know, when I talk to my children, their concern is that if we go remote, Dad. Are, what's the chances of going back normal, the new normal, hybrid after that? So that's their concern. Did anyone ask the children? Did anyone ask the customers? The children are the customers. They're the people that we're educating. And I have issues with how this was written. If this note was written with, hey, we don't trust people. We don't trust our staff. We don't trust the parents. We don't trust families. I could get behind this much better, but when it says the risk. Could come from traveling out of state, and that was today's note, that should not even be in there. There should be no mention of the risk should be traveling out of state. It should not be in there. It's not, the risk is not allowed. It's not allowed. Hosting a large gathering beyond immediate family, that's not allowed. Do I like it? No, but that's not allowed. You know, what is the science behind it? What does the AOE say about all of this? You know, another thing in here, there cannot even be leisure travel to Walpole, New Hampshire without quarantine. That's not true. It means non-essential travel. So again, if it was written better, I could probably get behind this, you know, with, with. With a little bit of heart, you know. I, I remember back, and I have a timeline. I remember back when. We. Were going to bring kids back to school and then there was supposed to be weekly updates and we had to fight to get those. We had to fight to get the weekly updates. Then there was supposed to be newsletters and we had to fight to get those, the weekly updates with newsletters. And then remember when we went from phase two to three? Anybody remember that? In phase three, we could go back to school and it was supposed to be remote. And then all of a sudden, the spacing issues came up again. But now we're just finally getting back to school a couple, like, was that six weeks later? So again, to back to what my own children said, how can we trust that they're going to go back after one week of remote? You know, I just. It just feels, again, like we're being forced into this. We, we asked to have time to look these things over. We get a letter on Friday, a Friday news dump, we get an email, and then a couple hours before this meeting, we get an updated one. And again, I don't not support it. I don't support how this is written. If it was written a little bit better with some numbers and facts. I could probably get behind it a heck of a lot easier than telling my kids, hey, you know what? The rules are this, but you can do this. I. You know, I have a hard time looking my kids in the eye and saying that, so I'm sorry. That's not how I'm gonna raise my family.
Thank you, Jason. Jessica West Clark?
Hi, Jason, I'm not sure why you're differentiating between leisure travel and non-essential travel to.
Do me a favor, please, Jessa, and address your comments to the chair.
All right. I'm not sure why Mr. Terrius is differentiating between leisure travel and non-essential travel.
I like the response. In a letter it says, in the first paragraph says, there cannot even be leisure travel to Walpole without quarantine. So you can travel if you're going for food. You can go over to Walpole to get, if you're on essential.
Yes.
That's.
But there's not leisure travel. I think they were, I think they were trying to set the example of a very close community nearby. But to both you and Priscilla, public, or I'm sorry, to Deb, this is what public comment is for. And there's no reason we shouldn't have accepted these letters. I do have a couple. Issues with something Deb said about causing mental incapacity. I don't think those were the right words. For what you were trying to describe. And you talked about people already not following guidelines. Well, as we know, there has been. Out of the thirty kids that were absent last week, a fair percentage of them were absent due to travel. And those were kids whose parents answered these screening questions on the app saying they had not traveled. And then the kid blurted out in school, so the nurse could hear that they had indeed traveled. There's that. And we've had teachers that have left the state for, while they consider it. To be somewhat essential travel. I know one example was for a funeral. That is technically non-essential travel, not allowed. They need to quarantine when returned, which means they're not teaching. I think the best. One of the best things was said by Angela Cardia, that if we decide to do this now and set a timeframe. It is far better for the teachers and the kids and even the parents to know that it's coming, people can prepare for it. If we don't, and you get told on Wednesday that your kid can't go to school or none of the kids can go to school. It is harder on families than it is to know today that they can't go to school for a week. I think that is a very important point that has been somewhat missed. That yes, it is very hard for families to stay home and have to deal with childcare and jobs. And I do understand that very much, Deb. But I think it is far better for them to know ahead of time. That it's coming than it is to have it dropped on them at the last minute. time that it's coming than it is to have it dropped on them at the last minute. You can probably ask some Westminster families how they felt if that closing was easier for them or harder for them not having any notice of it. And then I guess my last point, when you're talking about looking at the numbers, the state of Vermont's COVID-19 map, which anybody who works in healthcare or works with people knows is not 100% accurate, the map by community. You'll also notice that the map by community still shows zero cases in Westminster, and we know that there was two cases of students in the Westminster Central School, which by definition are residents of Westminster. But the state map can be done by mailing address or primary custodial parent address, regardless of where they live. So that right there is an excellent example as to why the state map is a best effort data map, and we should consider it as such.
Thank you, Jessa. I do see your hand, Jack. I also see a hand from Priscilla, I presume, and if you were ready to be recognized, Priscilla, I'd like to hear from you.
You're, am I not muted now?
I can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to take Jack first? I mean.
Jack has, Jack has spoken. I was going to.
Okay. All right, then I'll go ahead.
... before we.
Okay. The first thing, I've got basically two things, two different things to say here. First, approving the superintendent's recommendation does not remove the district authority to operate its schools. That is a district decision, and so therefore it would have to be taken to each of the boards individually. We can look at this as a recommendation and a advisory-type thing to the school, to the other boards, but it really is not binding on any of the districts because that is up to them. I heard Jessica talk about the map, and she's right. There are, have been, there was one attributed to Bellas Falls that was Westminster way back early in March or May, May 1. And so it could be your surrounding district. If you look at our surrounding districts, the surrounding districts do not have a lot either, so possibly the Westminster ones would have gone to Putney or to Bellas Falls or, you know, in those areas. So we are looking at those districts as not having a lot of COVID in this area. But the other thing is that the governor has ordered this. It was ordered after those, those surveys were taken. Yes, people can violate them, but he is thinking about putting in penalties for violations if people do violate them. And I personally am not comfortable with supporting staff, students, and parents traveling or having multiple family gatherings in conflict with what the governor has said. And I feel that this motion does support that type of situation. I have to support what the governor said. I would expect our staff to set the example of following what the governor has said, not travel, no multiple family gatherings. They are allowed if they have a family relative that is only one person. They do have the right to have that person come to have Thanksgiving dinner with them. But the multiple ones should be put up there for them. We should do education this week for our parents and our, our families and say, you know, this is what the governor is telling you. And we should be obeying the authorities. Those medical authorities at the state made these decisions so that we could keep the schools open. That is what the governor keeps telling us in every press conference. We want students in school, so therefore we are putting in restrictions so as to help out with that so that you can continue that in person time with those children. On the news, the other day, there was a child who cried because she wanted to go to school and did not understand why some of the other family members could go to preschool program, I think it was, when she wanted to go so badly to school. Our kids want to come to school and want to be educated. This gives them a sense of normalcy for the times. No, it's not normal, but it does get normalcy for these times. I would love to be able to go visit my children. I'd love to be able to have Thanksgiving dinner with them. I can't visit those children, my grandchildren that are in other states, I can't go visit them either, and I have to abide by that. Do I take COVID situations seriously in response to a comment that was made at one point? Yes, I take it very seriously. I wear my mask, I stay distanced, I watch out for other people, I do what I need to do, and that's what I expect of our staff, our administration. I expect that of other parents, and I expect that they will teach their children in that same way. But if you close the school for a week, you are adding another week of possible travel that's easy for parents to do because they can just sign on anywhere to that remote. And that makes it easier, and you're just making possibilities for more travel and more family gatherings and more children needing to go to see other people because we don't have them, allowed to see them in schools. Thanks for listening.
Okay. Thank you, Priscilla. I have three hands. I have both Jack and Jason, as well as Superintendent Pratt. However, I'm aware that Megan Applegate and George, who is a member of Rock Board, is also in the room, and I want to point out once again that the Supervisor Union Board is a joint board of all the districts. However, each board has three votes. That does not in any way preclude a non-voting member's participation in discussion. And for that reason, I would like to ask you, Megan, now, if you have any comment you would like to make at this point, and if not at this point, please let me know as the meeting progresses. So I'm, I'm querying you, Megan.
I appreciate that, David. Right now, I don't have a comment. I'm, I'm absorbing quite a bit, but I will speak up and raise my hand if I do.
Thank you. Keep us in mind.
Thank you.
And I have a new hand from George. So George, I'm going to recognize you before I get to Chris, and then I will again recognize both Jack and Jason.
Thank you. How do we go about settling this SU versus constituent board, which supersedes which? Where, you know, it keeps coming up, and I'm kind of getting irritated with it, and I'd like to just know one way or another. How, how, how can we figure that out? Where does that, where does that lie? Where does that answer lie?
I want to give you a blunt answer, George. I think that Chris is going to have to query legal counsel because I think this is a fairly involved legal question. I think there's no doubt whatsoever that matters of policy are still within the providence of local boards. However, we're, we're in an area here, which, as Jack Breyer has indicated, may spill over into curriculum, so it's not, I think, a clear-cut answer. But I, at the conclusion of this meeting, I will be speaking with Chris and, and querying counsel so we can have a clear answer to the questions you've raised, because I have the same question. Okay, Chris, you had a hand up, and then I'll go back and recognize Jack and Jason again.
Yeah, I think a lot of good points have been made, but I just want to spiral back to saying, you know, this is about putting the safety of the students first, and, you know, I am going to listen to my medical professionals and my administrators and majority of people who are supporting the nurses' letter to, you know, close the schools for a short time. Um, in addition to that, you know, I don't, you know, I feel that we shouldn't be point, you know, always pointing the fingers at the teachers and the employees and the administration that they're the ones traveling. You know, I'm, I'm, I have utmost confidence in my teachers, in my, you know, anyone who works with the district, they're doing everything they can to keep the kids safe. And it's not my indication that we're talking about the ones we don't have control over. The governor can say what he wants, but in reality, people are still going to do and travel if they need to travel or if they want to travel. We're just trying to proactive in this whole approach in regards to putting the safety of the kids first. Yes, kids do need to be in school and learning. However, we get back from Thanksgiving recess and we're finding out kids have traveled or the next day they've traveled, and all of a sudden they're asymptomatic and they show up in the schools, where does that leave us? That's going to leave us even in a worse place because we're not going to have, if we have students in the building and are asymptomatic, and all of a sudden our teachers come down with it, we're not going to have enough staff to even teach the kids. This is not about us trying to not get kids back in the building. This is strictly because we're trying to put the safety of the students first, the staff first, and try to contain this spread because we need time to prepare after Thanksgiving. We already know, like people said, people are saying one thing but doing something else. We can't control that. What we can control is what goes through the doors of those buildings and protecting our students and our staff in regards to what we're looking at in this pandemic. So it, it's the letter by the nurses, but, you know, I, I do support it and hope the recommendation is made. And, you know, after the week, you know, if it's approved, we'll get back to instruction. It's an up and down circus. I mean, people are talking about there's nothing, you know, there's nothing normal about what we're doing that we're trying to do. In the schools and in their offices, we're making changes on a regular basis, meaning two or three times a day, the, the information is changing and we have to convene and talk about it again. And I think, you know, we should be relying on the medical personnel that are dealing with it every day at the front doors of the buildings, and the data that we're keeping is exceptional data. But look what the nurses says. They're filling out the form one way, and we're finding out that's not the case. We cannot control the situation going about it the usual typical way we have. As educators, yes, we all know the students have to learn, and we don't want them to lose ground, but we're going to put the safety and the well-being of them before even their education, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Now, I already have Jack, Jason, and Jessa on my list for second comment. However, I do have a hand up from Carrie Kennedy, the principal at Central. I believe I have a hand up from Principal Hodgson at BFUHS. And I'm going to first recognize Principal Kennedy, and then I will recognize Principal Hodgson. So Carrie, go ahead, please.
Thank you, and I appreciate the chance to speak at this moment. So I just want to reiterate a part about the supporting the nurses' position, but also I'm spending a lot of my time policing students and what's, what's been happening and not getting into the instruction piece. And, and that, it goes back to the safety, and that's very important. But really, you know, it is happening that parents are not completely being honest. We had a specific case this week, and the student is now quarantined because they went for a leisure travel, they went to New Hampshire, they posted on Facebook, it was reported and with pictures, and so it wasn't even something that we had to dig for, and it became a big issue. And so now it affects a lot of people. We're waiting for multiple cases that are, you know, positive COVID interactions, and we're waiting to hear what's happening for our students who are being tested. I'm not sure if Jen mentioned those numbers tonight because she, we had just gotten that information just before the meeting. So it, the numbers are building, and I know, just to point, Ms. Lambert, Keen is going remote, starting after Thanksgiving. They will be remote, like Toot to Rivers for, till January 11th, too, so just to add that into it. So this was a proactive approach for about a week instead of doing the whole time in a response that other states have done or other towns. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Chris Hodgson.
You're muted, Chris.
So a few things. I just want to clear up some kind of points of fact. One board member had raised concern with the term leisure travel in the letter. I just want to point out to board members, if you look at the Vermont Department of Health, they're very specific with their language, and the nurses were very precise in their use of language in the letter. In the Department of Health, they differentiate essential travel as travel that is okay, and they use the word leisure travel, and then they use examples of what that means. So I just want to point out, that's not, that was not a word chosen by happenstance. It's, it's precise language use. There was one board member who spent a good amount of time only raising concerns about staff and staff travel and staff need to follow the rules, and we should have high expectation for staff. Honestly, there are way more students involved in schools and therefore way more families that will have some sort of impact on that, and we do have a greater capacity to influence the staff decisions than we do the family decisions. So I just want to point that out, that the, it is not about staff choices and staff decisions that can and might be a part of that, but it's way more about choices that the families are making. There was one board member who referenced Keen's decision-making and choices that they're making, although Carrie, I think, just provided some information about that, but along the way noted that they have 33 cases, and then held up Keen as making good decisions. I would throw out for the board's consideration, we have zero, well, no zero, we have far fewer than 33 cases in our district, so maybe the decision-making that has been happening at this, in this district, might be better held up as an example than Keen's decision-making. I'm not holding anything against Keen, but that was just an observation that I made. There was a board member who had mentioned that, really, in kind of one observation after the other, that we should have high expectations that individual families are going to follow the governor's expectations. And then immediately said, but if we extend this time off, they won't follow the expectations. So I don't know that you can really make both of those arguments at the same time. They really run in conflict with each other. Either they're going to follow the rules, and therefore if we take the week off, they're going to still follow the rules, or they're not going to follow the rules, and if we take the week off, they're going to still not follow the rules. You can't really have it both ways. But in closing, what I would just like to note is, I really appreciated Jen Burke's data as well. Jen Burke noted something in the 20s to 30s of elementary school students who are missing out on education. And I can very confidently say that if we continue regular education after the Thanksgiving break comes back, just based on my own observations of students' choices and family choices, you will be cutting off most likely 50 or more elementary school students from their education if we stay in place because those students, because of reasons around traveling or being ill, won't be able to participate. So if you decide to vote this down, you're going to have a lot of elementary school students who miss out on their education for a week or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I want to just take note that we have two additional, we have two more principals in the room, Karen Bukowski and Helen Richards-Peele. If, if either of you would like to be recognized in this discussion, this would be a good time to it, to do it, because otherwise, we're going to go back and hear from members who've already spoken and would like to speak again. Karen or Helen?
I don't, I don't have anything to add, David. Thank you, that hasn't already been said, so I do not want to delve into repetition.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Helen, are you all set?
Hi, David. I already spoke, and I would be happy to yield my time to Andrew Haas, who's had his hand up for a while.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed you, Andy. And I would like to recognize you now, if for no other reason than your patience. So go ahead, Andy.
No, thank you, David. And I just, more, and I, I know that Carrie Kennedy already mentioned it, but as a, I live in Keen, and I just wanted to set the record state that, that SAU 29 on Friday chose to go remote from Thanksgiving through mid-June or mid-January, pardon me. And I actually got a text message during this meeting that Fall Mountain made the same decision just tonight. And I just wanted, in our surrounding areas, that you guys knew what those decisions were. And I can speak as a parent, because I have two boys in the high school, they're both displeased with the fact that the school district made the decision that it did because it's really based on the fact that students are choosing to go to parties, and that's what's caught, what, that's the, some of the reasons why the district had made the decision to close school down was because they can't control the students. And, and they felt like, you know, they're being punished because some kids aren't doing it, but they fully understand the reason why. And so just wanted to make that known. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy. All right. Are there any members here who have not had, board members who have not had an opportunity to address this discussion?
Gerald Charles has, and David.
Gerald Charles, you were recognized. Cheryl Charles, you are recognized.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, well, first I want to acknowledge everyone who has spoken. And to recognize that there that there are authentic differences of opinion uh among us all here uh to to some extent. I uh haven't spoken yet and I will say that it's my view. First of all, that that this this disease is extremely serious. And that we have been fortunate in this region where we live. Because people have been responsible, caring for one another. And have followed the clear guidelines from the governor, the Department of Health, the Agency of Education to date. I'm one who believes that if we exercise additional caution here. That actually reinforces what the governor and the leadership at the state level have been asking us to do. We're not undermining, we're actually reinforcing the guidance, which is really to keep everyone as safe as we possibly can. I also believe that the teachers do need more time to plan for what is a high probability of a disruption in schooling. I believe that it's a reasonable thing to do to extend a holiday by seven days has been has has been suggested. It's not closing the school, it's really adding a few more days so that we can see the extent to which what will have been increased risk for everyone during that period. The extent to which that increased risk turns into incidences of the disease in our community. So I strongly support taking the recommendation of the nurses uh and the administration and the teachers who have recommended this extension of the holiday, giving everyone more time, including parents, to plan for it. And again, I fully recognize that others don't agree with me.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh George, I'm going to put you on my uh secondary list. Megan, uh Apple, you are recognized.
So I I'm very nervous. I'm still getting used to being on the board, but I would regret if I hung up on this call tonight and didn't speak up. And I I find it disheartening that in all other circumstances, we place our full trust in our nurses and our principals and our teachers and our SU staff, except in a global pandemic. And to me, to all of a sudden start questioning these people that we trust in any other circumstance, it's troublesome to me. And and I fully support the nurse's letter and I fully support the principals and the teachers and all of the input they're giving. And so that's all I had.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, um I believe we've heard from all uh members. I have your hand, George, and I have your hand, Jack. So I I have a list that I'm going to work here. It'll be Jack, Jason, Jessa and George. I'm going to ask you all, oh, and Priscilla, if you would please uh try to keep your comments under two minutes. Because I think at this point, uh members probably have a pretty good idea how they're going to vote. But um I think that your uh additional comment will probably be useful to us. So go ahead, Jack, and if you can be brief, I would appreciate it.
Um, I will. I understand, you know, the objections of Jason and Deb and they're heartfelt and they come from a real place. Public health is a hard problem. Public health is something where it addresses what people do, not what they ought to do. If public health was limited to just what people ought to do, we wouldn't have Narcan doses in our schools. We wouldn't have birth control in our schools. We have these things because people. Public health is something that addresses how people actually behave as opposed to how they're supposed to. This is a public health issue that we're addressing. And yes, I everyone is always asked, when we do these things, are we encouraging the bad behavior? Well, that's a good question, but the fact of the matter is, we have the public health issue to consider. What we're what we're getting here is recommendation from our nurses on a matter of public health. And I just would ask us to bear that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, uh Jason?
Uh, thanks, David. So I just want to be clear in what I'm trying to say. Um, Chris Pratt, uh Chris Hodgson and even Priscilla said that we're closing school for a week. We're not closing school for a week, we're going remote, okay? And I want to be clear that I know how hard all of the nurses and teachers work. I'm married to an educator that works in a district for the last twenty-seven years, so I know how hard she works. Um, and the thing that I don't like, I just don't like how it's written. I support, I don't not support this. I don't like how it's written because, you know, a few months ago, when we wanted schools open. The teachers and administration pointed to the governor and the state and said, we're going to follow what they said. Now, you want us to ignore what the governor's and state is saying because this is what you guys want. It just doesn't feel right. If you wrote it like that, I would be like, okay, fine. If you wrote it and said, we are going to ignore what the state says, then I'd be like, yeah. I can get behind that because that makes common sense. It makes common sense. That's all. Oh, no, sorry, it's not all. If we do this, do the um do the custodians get paid?
Chris Pratt?
Yeah, they begin cleaning the buildings.
So they're going to get paid. What about the bus drivers?
Um, haven't haven't gotten that far yet.
They they, why not? They should be paid. What about cafeteria staff? They're going to be working, I'm assuming, because providing meals, right?
Yep, and the drivers will probably be, you know, could be transporting meals. But I said it, we haven't they we haven't gotten that. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, I I just if if it's going to be remote, I I think, you know, fair is fair. I mean, it's how we always do things around here. Um, and and just lastly, River Tech, uh River Valley Tech, they're still going to have four days of remote. And we want to remind you since the beginning, these kids have been with other schools, um and then they go back to their schools. So, you know, they still have that and they're still going to have that. So just wanted to point that out. And again, I don't not support this. I don't like the way it was written.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Uh, Jessa West Clark?
Um, yep, I just had, I was scribbling here on my notepad saying that we cannot control others' behavior, but we can control our reactions to it. Um, and I think if it comes down to the legalities of it and we can't get a legal opinion in time. I believe at the very least, the support staff and the paras are employed by the SU. And I know paras can be reassigned to different locations without board input. Um, so it's certainly possible that the administration can cause us to go with remote regardless of the local board approval. And with that said, I would like to call a question and have the SU vote on the motion.
Okay, a question has been called. Um, I'm uh going to uh roll call the board to see if the uh call of the question has been sustained.
He has permission to speak. No, she's called.
I understand that, Priscilla. Um, uh, Priscilla, uh, do you sustain uh Jessa's motion to call the question?
No.
Okay, uh Jason Terry. You wish to sustain the call?
No.
Uh, George Smith?
No.
Cheryl Charles?
I'm sorry, clarify what we're voting on.
Uh, Jessa has moved to call the question. And uh I am pulling the board to find out if uh Jessa's uh call has been sustained. Do you wish?
Yes, yes. I I sustain Jessa's call for the question.
Okay, uh, uh, Lynn Morgan?
I'm unclear as to what we're voting on, I'm sorry.
We're uh Jessa wishes to call the question. Lynn?
And that means what?
That means that we would move immediately to a vote without hearing additional discussion. I had two people left on my list.
Uh, no.
That's you do not sustain the call, okay? That is that you do not sustain Jessa's move to call.
Correct.
I think that's enough for you, David.
Okay, and we know how you have voted, uh Jessa. All right, um, I'm going to ask the board's uh forbearance here because it appears that um. Jessa, what was my, what was my? Are you sustained, Jessa? I'm I'm lost.
I think your count, no, I think you already had four noes um to continue discussion.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was reading, but I needed to check my math and I appreciate that. Okay, so uh once again, I have uh Priscilla and George on my list. I'm going to ask you both if you can keep your comments uh brief under two minutes because I think we're ready to vote this. Um, uh, go ahead, Priscilla.
I think we have to support the governor and Dr. Levine, the Pediatric Association, and all of those people that have said the importance of in-person for the mental health of our children is crucial. We have to, we need to educate the parents and the students to not travel and to not have multifamily gatherings. That's part of the um uh teacher's job as well because sometimes they don't get it. Um, and yes, the the staff has to set the example by by following that too. But we also have to educate because we have to expect the others to do that. For someone who breaks the rules, they can do it now, as you said they're doing. They can do it that additional week of remote, they can do it um all times during the year. And they may do that and they may continue to do that, but denying our other children in person is not fair. Um, and you can provide some extra tutor tutorials for those children that maybe are not are breaking those rules if you want to. Also, are we cutting out all extracurricular activities? Because if we're going remote, we need to cut out all extracurricular activities as well. And not have our children exposed in that because you're saying the same thing. That's that's under the same guidance that we're doing. But I think this is only an advisory vote because we the directive in August by the state was that the individual boards have the have the um right to uh control their education in their schools. The superintendent has the right to meet with the health department. And um if there's a COVID case in the in the school. And determine whether we need to um be able to continue the education or to shut down for a certain amount of time and go to remote. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. George?
Hi, um, I just wanted to point out that um, you know, for for every person that's for some form of closure such as this. I can find one that is of the opposite opinion. Um, so I personally am having a hard time finding balance um with making a decision here. Yeah, I lost my other point.
I forgot the teaching.
Anyway, that's kind of it. There there's it's we're we're basically playing a game tonight of who are we going to piss off? It's going to be a lot of people this side or a lot of people that side and, you know, it makes it really hard. And um, you know, again, I'm conflicted myself. I I just wanted to say those words, so I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Okay, Chris, I see your hand, but I think we're ready for the question. And the question is, uh, the pardon me, the motion is uh to support the superintendent's recommendation that the schools go full remote for the week following the Thanksgiving break and the week following the Christmas break. I'm going to roll call it once again. Uh Cheryl Charles, how do you vote?
I vote aye or yes in support of the motion.
Thank you. Uh Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Jessa West Clark?
Yes.
Uh Molly Bannock?
Yes.
Deb Wright?
She left, David.
Deb is gone? It's unfortunate, okay. Uh, George? Smith?
No.
Okay, um Jason Terry?
I I'd like to clarify. You said the week. I have the week down as eleven-thirty to twelve-four, returning on twelve-seven, one-four to one-eight, returning on one-eleven.
Chris, are those dates correct? Yes, yes, that's correct, Jason.
Okay, I vote no. I can't support how it is written.
Okay, Priscilla Lambert?
I vote no because I have to support the governor's directive and his wishes.
Okay, uh I have five ye- pardon me, I have four yes, I have three no, the motion carries. And once again, thank you all for um your patience with a very long discussion. Um, Chris, we're going to have to check with Pietro. Okay, um, we are now down to um Business Managers Report. That's Reports six B. Uh Finance, um Flora, if you're still with us, if we could have the Reader's Digest version, please. And if you would be so kind as to unmute yourself, that would be a big help too.
I'm sorry. So um currently we are working on audits. Um, the auditors will be uh in in office on Tuesday. Um, we have a separate area for them. As for the business office, we just um keeping our office excluded from everybody, only the six of us that's in office. Um, that way we just keep the business office as healthy as we can. Um, going with that as well, we just uh want to ask that um no more coming in reviewing warrants. If there is something specific from the warrants that uh you guys are concerned of, we could just scan that document and send it to you guys for now. Um, right now, our office is really essential. I can't have anybody um going out sick or anything. So we are trying to keep us in the best environment we can. Um, everything, we're cleaning, sanitizing. Um, and like I said, anything you guys need from us, we could always um try to scan that document and send it to you. And I'm working currently on budgets and budgets should be set um by the end of the month. So if you guys want to start thinking any um dates, so we could start reviewing budgets by the beginning of December. That's all for me.
Thank you, Flora.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, Priscilla, your question, please.
Um, I was wondering, I I have heard from quite a few people in various places that that um the email doesn't necessarily work really well for them. And I was wondering if Flora, if that you can um be sure there's some time that that people uh staff and teachers and others can call in and get a personal answer. Because sometimes emails, if you're back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, it takes lots of days. Whereas it might only take a couple minutes to answer an in-person phone call.
I apologize if they just got the impression that they could only email us. Um, like I have always put in the emails um all of our numbers, actually, and the signature of my email. I even have my cell phone. So um we are always welcome to anybody that wants to call and has any questions. Um, if it isn't HR, you know, Joellen is always taking calls. Um, if it's anybody from the staff, like I said, you know, and our website as well has um all the information for phone numbers and extension of each one of us and um and the title as well, so they know who they want to refer to. But if they don't really want to go on the runaround, they can always contact me. Like I said, like when I email anybody. My signature has my name, fax, phone number and cell phone. So I I have no idea why they will have the impression that they could only email us. Even in the office, we have a a sign, you know, that um right now we are not having anybody other than our staff in the office. But um they could always give me a call and it has my number and it does says, you know, that you could email as well. But even that sign has my phone number directly.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you. It may have come from um the other meeting where I asked a question and and you had said email was the best way. So that that may have been a misunderstanding. Thanks, Flora.
I apologize, but um so in case anybody needs it. So in case anybody needs it, phone number is 802-460-1468. Then any of us will be happy to help.
Thank you so much.
Jack Prior?
Hi, Flora, this is just an update for your benefit. The move to have Westminster withdraw from the Unified School District, their petition has happened. And that's going to mean that the three-town advisory boards are going to be activated in the next several weeks. The West Board probably almost immediately, or the West Committee almost immediately. They're going to have to pull together documentation about financial implications of such a separation. We're going to try to make sure that that process is orderly. And we're going to encourage those committees to work through your board reps. But I just want you to know, I will be sending you a list of who is on those committees. And we'll try to keep that process streamlined. But there's going to be a sort of a burst of questions between now and later, late December on this. And I just wanted to give you a heads up, actually give the administration a heads up that this is a town, town-led effort, and it is a pace. And we have the bulk of the information at the ESU that they're going to need. So we'll just try to keep this as orderly as we can, and I ask you all for your forbearance.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, we're, we're down to item eight, new business for discussion action, pardon me. Item seven, which is unfinished business for discussion action facilities, that's going to executive session.
You had a question?
Go ahead, Jason.
Sorry, I just had a question for Flora, real quick. Flora, are, have you found anything else going back to September? You know, when you started finding, finding some things that were not taken care of? Is everything up to date as of now?
So there is things that are up to date, and there's things that we are still correcting. But that is information like coding in the system, which it has nothing to do with financials. It's just like renaming something that it could be as easy as maybe payroll and then put it like the extra name, which will be like payroll tax. So, but it's nothing that has to do with funds. It's just organizing and labeling things better. So that way, when we run reports, like for example, the budget reports, it's easier for everybody to understand. Because we did have a lot of issues that names were changed and they're shortened. And it was difficult to follow up through with it. But most likely, everything else is just up to speed. I am really happy with the staff. We have worked really hard for this audit, and we'll see how it goes. They gave us one week, three pages, and we should be set by tomorrow with everything that they asked for, from us, which is pretty impressive for me being the first time trying to put all of these documents and information together. But we, we did split everything, and we worked really well as a team. So we'll see how it goes on Tuesday. I'll keep you guys posted.
Thanks, Flora.
Thank you.
Apologies, Jason, I missed your hand on that. As, as I, any other questions for Flora? Okay, thank you. As I just noted, item seven, old unfinished business for discussion action facilities. We'll get an update in executive session. Item eight, new business for discussion action, student-weighted funding formula. This, this looks at least as interesting as watching paint dry. I'm going to give you a very brief overview here. The Vermont Legislature passed what was known as Act 173, which moved the special education funding to a block grant. And under the block grant, if you're the town of Stowe, you got a whole lot of money now, all of a sudden, that you can spend on other things like your 504s, your ESLs. Essentially, what it is, is a form of tax relief because your voters' tax bills just went down. If you're Windham Northeast or other towns where you're looking at a 30% sped rate, well, your taxpayers just took it in the neck because whatever is excess to that block grant is going to be picked up by local tax after. There were enough towns and cities in this state that raised a ruckus that the Agency of Education actually commissioned a study of the equity issues involved in the implementation of Act 173. It got shelved. That committee came back with some very specific recommendations around weighting. And what weighting means is that a student is not always just a student. A high school student has a higher weighting, meaning more support from the state, than an elementary school student. Sped kids have a slightly higher wa, weighting. ESL students have a slightly higher weighting. Last week, I was one of a number of board chairs around the state who was approached by members of the Burlington School Board about entering into a discussion about urging the legislature to support the findings and recommendations of that commission, which was empowered by the Agency of Education to take a look at the equity issues of 173 and just exactly how fair it was to the towns. Jack and I went there Monday night. And I would say it was fairly thinly attended, but we're hopeful that there will be more input from around the state. And I'm bringing this up to you because I asked Chris Pratt to send you out a copy of that commission's report. And so I think it's 100 pages long. The pages that matter are pages two through six. And that's the executive overview from the Agency of Education. This is going to have huge, huge, huge impacts on local taxation. So I think it's very, very important for the supervisor union board, as well as the local boards, to give informed counsel to our representatives about how they are going to mitigate the impacts of 173, unless some of the recommendations of that commission are adopted. There's some serious equity issues here, there's some serious taxation issues here. I would like to take a look at it, and I'm hopeful that we can bring it back for our next meeting and have just as involved the discussion as we had under the superintendent's request for the time off in remote instruction after the holidays. Okay, that's, that's your homework. I will pursue people individually on this because this is going to have as large an impact on tax bills as anything else that we're going to be dealing with the school board members in, in the very near future. So it's important work, and we need to do it. Any questions? Ask Jack, because he was there. Les, Jackie would like to add to my monologue?
With my monologue and my own? No, the, the, the main thing is that you needed to look at the weighting study because under 173, the towns of Athens and the towns of Rockingham, in particular, get it in the neck. And the, there needs to be a sensitive weighting formula because now it would just be the elementary schools in Rockingham and in Athens that'll get it in the neck. It's not, it's, it's something that really does require thorough study and a lot of pushback. 173 was a terrible piece of legislation. This is an attempt to amend a terrible piece of legislation. But even as amended, it's still going to be problematic unless there is organized effort among the poor communities of the state to protect the education of their students.
Thank you, Jack. Very eloquent summary. We're down to director's comments. And Megan, since you're with us tonight, I'm going to ask you if you have any director's comment you would like to share with us.
I, I appreciate that, but I said all I had to say earlier. Thank you so much, though.
Okay, thank you. Molly Bannock?
No, thank you.
Okay. George Smith?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that, you know, any decision we make is hard, and, you know, we're not... I guess I can't speak for we, it's me, me personally, and I can't sit here and say that I'm making choices based off of what I believe is the right thing to do. It, it's, a good portion of it is based off of what I hear from people and what I hear from folks around the community and, and in people in different situations. It's not just my opinion on what is voted for, or it's our job to represent these people. So that's the balance that, that, you know, we're, we're, we're trying, that I'm trying to, to have here. And, you know, it's difficult, and, and, and it's no disrespect to anybody, and I, and I appreciate everybody, especially speaking to the, the motion tonight. I respect everybody, nurses, teachers, everybody involved. And it, it's, it's not anything against anybody. It's just trying to best represent the people that, that I interact with and that, that put us here. So, thank you.
Thank you, George. Jessa?
I'm good, thank you.
Jason Terry?
Yeah, David, I just want to, I hope Flora was listening when you were talking about the taxes for Rockingham. It's very concerning as a town, personally, as a town. And I just want to say cheers to that teacher who sent out that email and spoke up about wanting to have a full-time school, and she was on board with that. And that, I think that just shows that there potentially could be a management problem at, you know, some of those schools, because not everyone is in agreeance with everyone. And cheers to that person to have the courage to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Jack Prior?
I, I just want to say that the decision we made tonight is not actually the decision I would make if it was, if this was a majority vote on these issues. Because the medical professionals in my house were saying, why is it only for a week? Because the medical protocol probably should be two weeks. But what the principle here is that being guided by the domain experts is what we need to do when we make policy decisions. It's, that's the most responsible thing we can do. I hope that we consider doing that now and going forward because this isn't going to be the first time we'll be faced with this over the next several months. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Cheryl Charles?
Thank you. I'm, I'm thinking about, about George's comment. And simply want to say, as I think back to what I said tonight, and I use the phrase "in my view", and I want to say, just for the record, that when I make a comment like that, it's based on a synthesis of information from a variety of sources. Certainly from constituents in the context of our conversation tonight, based on the science, based on my reading, based on, again, a host of sources of, of information. So that's only a way for me to clarify what a phrase like that, at least coming from me, might mean. And again, with all of this, I think that the decision we made tonight is in the best interest in the large picture here of the students, on the families, and the communities. I think to err on the side of caution for a few extra days, a week perhaps, of remote learning, as Jason aptly put it, puts us in a better position to have more stable in-person learning for longer this year. So that's, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Cheryl. Priscilla Lambert?
Yes. It is a hard decision anytime decisions come up. Because we went in the beginning of the year with one-third of the parents who wanted hybrid. 32%, I think, and 32% wanted all in-person. And we went with the hybrid. The full in-person totally got left out of the decision. The ones that wanted remote got to do VTBLC or do homeschooling. So we have satisfied those, but we are forgetting those parents that absolutely need us and want their children to be educated. So that is a crucial thing that I hope we're keeping in the back of our minds. I'm not saying necessarily for this vote, but, but back, in the back of our minds, that there are a bunch of people that want out there. Our state people, our Pediatrics Association, our Dr. Levine at the state. Lots of medical personnel are saying we need this in-person and open. So, yeah, can we up with one week? We probably can, one week here, one week there, after the, after the holidays, winter. But we do need to be working to toward full in-person because that's what is going to help the mental health of our children. And we do have plenty of teachers, as we pointed out tonight, that in our district do want us open instead of this remote thing that, that's going on. It does need to go to the individual boards now because they are the ones who are responsible for directing. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Lynn Morgan?
No comment.
Okay. All right, then. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session inviting administration to attend for the purpose of a brief discussion of the unfair labor practice which has been filed against the district. Update on superintendent evaluation and real estate. Have a motion, please. George has a motion. Do I have a second? And Cheryl has the second. I'm simply going to ask if anyone is opposed to please say no. All right, then, it's unanimous. Chris, if you can get us into executive session, I would appreciate it.